Week or the weekend.
If we leave it.
Week after.
Yeah.
I don't want it one on Thanksgiving.
Beep de beep, boo 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 de boo.
What's your guys' schedule?
Boo de boo, boo boo.
You only got a two to two.
You're the top.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have Lois tonight, too.
That's all I got, man.
Mrs. Phyllis, not Lois.
Oh, sorry.
This is Annie.
Hi Annie, how you doing?
I'm okay, how are you?
Okay, well, I think we can all hear ya.
Annie, can you hear us?
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Hi Annie. Annie, Annie, you okay?
I'm okay.
Okay.
I've turned it down six nine, it hasn't changed. I wondered if Michelle, if Michelle can hear me.
Nisha.
Cause it's not changing. Maybe she won't say much.
Well, you sure as Debbie in that.
Am I too loud? I can mute myself.
Yes, you're too loud.
Yeah, but it's not, nothing that we can't change about our phone for some reason.
Usually do.
Okay, say something now.
Say something now.
Oh, that's better.
I'm not going.
Say something now.
Say something now.
Yes. No, that's good. We can hear her.
I really, I don't think I have much to say. I'm just gonna be listening for the most part. I've already met with Chief Lynn, um, except for with the public seekers. I wanna hear what they have to say, but I don't think I'll be contributing much, so I'm just gonna mute you guys.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Whatever she said. No, he's sick, he's got, he's in beds.
Okay.
He's got bronchitis and he's walking around with a mask today. Let's go back to, uh, Jamie. We're about ready. What time is it? I'd like to call a meeting to order. To every roll call, please.
Oh, good, it didn't crackle. All right. Um, Councilmember Kelly is absent. Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Vice Mayor Best.
Here.
And Mayor Croft.
Here. Um, Councilman Kelly has the gleep. He, he came in with a mask on the day. The doctor put him to bed, so he's not gonna be here with us tonight. Only, he said, I talked to him this afternoon and he seems to be a happy dude. Maybe it's the happy stuff he got from his doctor, I don't know. Okay, item two, review and discussion regarding ordinance number seventeen eight thirty-four admitting that Chino Valley Town Code, Chapter nineteen, animals. We are going to, Lieutenant, why don't you come up here?
Yeah, can't be in the back row now.
And tell us what you've done since the last meeting we had on this policy, please.
Absolutely. So I don't have the copy, like, the official copy that'll tell me what pages you guys have them on.
I don't think we need to go page to page. But what, what, I know you met with some council members and...
Correct. We, we met with, uh, well, I met with, I think, four of you and the chief met with a couple of you as well. We got feedback from you guys and made some alterations based on that feedback. So, uh, under ninety point zero six subsection G.
Give us a minute.
This is really, really, this is the big change, um, subsection G. So, in the new copy, the changes are in red and then things are crossed out, um, that were removed. So, pretty much, we removed the entire section of, uh, under subsection G, H, I, and I think that was all of them, and everything under those, those subsections. And we just summarized and changed the wording to say subsection G, emergency assistance of animal. So the police, if a police officer, animal control officer observes an animal in imminent danger or death or inhumane suffering, the police officer, animal control officer may assist the animal as needed. So we kind of shortened to the point, gets across what we're trying to accomplish here, which is to help an animal in distress, um, and from suffering or possibly dying if we can. And then, uh, our attorney pointed out that because we changed that verbiage, there was one other place that the matching verbiage also had to be changed. Um, just to say, instead of emergency seizure of animal, just to make it match as emergency assistance of animal further on in the subsection, just to change that type of verbiage. So those were the, I guess, the crux of it and the main point of contention and debate at the last council meeting.
Any questions from anyone here?
No.
Questions?
No?
Uh, I got one.
Yes, sir.
And it's to help the town as far as we took out dangerous dogs. And...
Aggressive.
Well, we have aggressive dogs. We always had, uh, aggressive dogs in our code, but we took dangerous dogs out and I should've brought my old copy. But it gave the town a way to go ahead and take care of that dog. To go ahead and, okay, your dog wasn't aggressive before, but now it is. And we give them a warning and then we could go ahead and pursue after that.
Um, under the current code, there is no warning. If your dog is dangerous, it is no longer allowed in town unless you can get an insurance policy, which we tried to accomplish with the subject in town. We're incapable of doing. Um, so if your dog is deemed dangerous under the current code, it can't be in town unless you can meet all those requirements.
Okay, so if I have a, a pit bull, which may or may not be dangerous, how do we know?
We, we don't.
We don't.
Unless he does something.
Until it does something.
Correct. Under the current code, he doesn't have to do anything. He just has to be capable of doing something, which is every single dog ever born in this country is capable of being dangerous. And under our current code, it says if any dog is capable of, then it's, can be classified as dangerous. So technically, we could go around and just get rid of everybody's dogs and...
Yeah, but the court has to decide dan- whether a dog is dangerous or not. We just can't do it arbitrarily.
No, by, by definition and statute currently in our town code, it says what a dangerous dog is. It gives the definition of a dangerous dog, which is any dog that has the potential to bite a human. So, now, we've never done that because it's not what should be done.
Right.
Um, however, um, under the current code, if the dog bites one time, the court can deem it. And there's nothing that owner can do to prove otherwise. There's no affirmative defense that says, well, I'm gonna take my dog to obedience training, or I'm gonna do this, or I'm gonna do this, to get your dog off that list the moment it's classified. So we're changing to aggressive, so the dog has to make overt actions to be classified as such, and has to do it at least more than once. And then there's, there are ways for people now to get their dog removed off of it. I called Caesar Milan or some world-class dog trainer to come into town and teach my dog how to not be mean. And then they can petition the court to get their dog back into town. Currently, that is impossible. There's no, no legal way for them to go about doing that.
Okay. I'll accept that.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I know we have some people concerned out here. I'm gonna give you about fifteen minutes to come up and discuss anything you don't like about it. We will do that this evening. We will bring this back on the twenty-fourth. It will be on the agenda. I will not take comments at that time. We will discuss it among the council and we will vote on it. So if you have any concerns, right now, you need to come up and talk about it. You got, I'll give each of you that wanna do that five minutes. Yes, ma'am, come up.
Did you say fifteen minutes?
You have five minutes, and in five minutes, for anybody else, we have a total of fifteen minutes.
Okay. Is it on? I don't know.
It is, okay.
Okay. Just real quick, then. Uh, dangerous dog does, does in some ways define what a dangerous dog is, and it has to be aggressive. Uh, in your definitions, dog at large, right now, it says that, or implies, that if a dog is loose on your personal property and your gate's open, is considered at large. I think that needs to be looked at. Um, ninety point oh three, injury by vehicle, you're putting the public at risk by telling them to go identify that dog and call the owner. That needs to be worded. Ninety point oh four, you have a conflict where you're telling the person to break the law that you had just said. Uh, so that kind of needs to be worded a little bit. Um, ninety point oh five, you got dog at large and designation of aggressive dog together. They should be separated. Um, under ninety point oh six, uh, empowerment of dogs and destruction should, should be a different heading. Uh, it says you have to have proof, prove your, this is your dog. How do you prove it's your dog? If it's not microchipped. I, you don't define how you, how to prove. Proof of right to do so, to take it out of the pound. Um, that needs to be defined some way. Um, thank you for the imminent danger. That was very nice. Um, will the, um, animal control officer be, um, trained in what imminent danger is and how to deal with a volatile situation if she should go into someone's property? That, that's a, a big concern. The town can get sued quite quickly on that. Um, ninety point twelve, there's your nuisance ordinances, and they have been kind of taken out. The barking dog, we, we barely touched on it, uh, last meeting. All the other cities and towns in the area have the five to ten-minute limit on barking dogs. That would be nice to bring back in, then people will know how to stay within the law. And the person who complains every day will know that they can't complain unless it's over five or ten minutes. Um, also, it says to the peace and enjoyment of any reasonable per- person residing in the town limits. Does that mean someone five miles away can drive past my house, hear my dogs bark and complain? When they, they are not in the immediate area of hearing the dogs? And yes, it does. Um, when we get in, into ninety fourteen, you're making the small child responsible, not the dog or the dog owner, if it's aggressive. Putting a sign on the fence is great, but a three-year-old doesn't know what a sign is. If you know the dog is dangerous, it should be in a pen off the property line, and the property should be also fenced to protect the child, not the dog or the dog owner. And those are the things I think should be revisited, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else out in the audience would like to speak? Of course. Donna, come on up, girl. You got five minutes, ma'am.
First of all, you guys changed some of this stuff and then didn't put it out to any of us, so we don't know what the changes were. And that kind of leaves us with, okay, where do we start now? Um, in your dangerous dog ordinance, part of this that he's taken out, this, I think it's the second or third line, says dangerous dog, and there's a word for, um, what is it?
Propensity.
Propensity. By taking the word propensity out of that sentence and then leaving all the rest of the dangerous dog stuff in there, I think would give you what we're looking for. I true, I, I stand behind everything Debbie says also. To reiterate what she said, I thought she did that well. I noticed going all the way through here, sometimes we talk about sheep and goats, and sometimes we talk about cats. I think there needs to be a definition, and we're, if this is only a dog law, then take all the rest of the animals out and say, this is our dog law. Because most of these are not gonna pertain to anybody's cat, because we all know that if a cat's causing problems, nobody owns it. Um, there's some ownership things in here that I wasn't real excited about. Uh, if a dog is loose on my property, I do not have to have collars and tags. However, if the dog is loose on my property and animal control comes on, they can say, there's no tags on this dog, it's at large, and you, you don't own it. Now, that's in here. If you look at what this page says versus what this page says, and I think that's kind of dangerous for reasons we all know. There's also something in here about poisoning. And if I put a poison out for my barn has rats, and something happens, and obviously, I'm not doing it on purpose, but an animal gets a hold of one of those rats because it went next door, I can be prosecuted. So now, I'm not supposed to keep the rats and the mice out of my house and out of my barn. And I think that's a little over-exaggerated also. So, um, there's one more. There's a lot of things in here that's kind of redundant, and I'm not real sure why. I, I don't know if it's the ease of going to a section and being able to write the certif- the citation rather than having to go through each and every little thing. I don't know. Um, and I also would s- make a suggestion, and I don't know if it's on there or not, but a lot of, they're, they keep talking about these fees that could be introduced if, if you did this or that or the other thing. And are the fees on the website, on the town site, so that people know what these fees are? I mean...
I see him shaking his head back there, Ron. Yes.
They are? Okay. When it comes to the responsibility of a biting dog in Section A, that would be ninety eleven. Section A, it talks about if the responsible person takes their own dog in and all of this, and then fees. Well, if I, if my dog bites according to what I have been told, I, my facility is of such that it could, I could keep it there and keep it under, because I'm just set up that way. But then they can charge me fees if I board my own dog.
I see heads going this direction.
Well, I gave you the section. It's there. So, I will bid you farewell for now.
Okay. Any, anyone else? Yes, sir. Tom?
Good job, I mean, okay. Mister Mayor, Councilman, Tom Armstrong, twenty-one sixty, Mojave. Uh, two-fold reasons while I'm here. Number one, if you sit on P and Z, you're required to attend a study session. Jamie marked me down, I was here. I am looking at the town's resolution number twelve dash nine nine nine. Now, I understand there's been discussions about corrections or something to that, but this is the latest information that has not been updated, as far as I understand it. I am looking at ninety dash oh five, dogs running at large. And I get to sub-paragraph five, it says, "If such dog is being utilized as a service dog for a handicapped person or a seeing eye dog in assisting a legally blind person." If my service dog gets loose and takes off down eighty-nine, that's a dog at large. I don't care that it's a service dog or not. And that, and that entire resolution is the only place that I find mention of a service dog. At the very least, I would like to see the ADA service dog regulations added in as a chapter, an amendment, or something along with your dog ordinances, so our control officers and our policemen are aware, because this ADA stuff, whether it's dogs or not, can get sticky. Thank you.
Do you have a copy of that you could give us?
Sure, be happy to.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Okay, we've got a lot of information tonight.
We need, I would like to hear rebuttal on Mister Sean.
Okay. Sean, please come up.
Yes, sir. I would like to hear some rebuttals to their act, to their...
Um, well, in reference to ADA stuff, Arizona statute covers a lot of stuff in reference to disability animals and things like that. We comply with all ADA regulations, um, not just in our department, even the pool and things like that. We've had discussions with them. Um, and we do treat, uh, service animals as required. Um, we did change the whole, in the old version, um, of the, uh, ninety point oh five, the service dog. Um, we added a section that the service dog is, as long as it's under sufficient control by the handler, it's not at large. So he can't just let his dog run down the highway, or it is at large. So we did add that this time, cause it was, it wasn't, uh, clearly identified in, in the statute, so. In reference to, um, some of the things, some of the issues that were brought up, uh, by the first speaker are currently in the current statute. It's not things we added, they're in there right now, so, um, we didn't add or subtract some of those things. Um, in reference to a dog on your property being at large, the new definition of dog at large is a dog that is, for, the definition of dog at large is a dog that is not on the premises of the owner. So if it's on your premises, it can't by definition be at large. So, that shouldn't be an issue if, based on the legal definition that's in the current statute and is being continued into the new ordinance that we've recommended. We haven't altered that in any fashion. Um, so, um, we're not gonna charge someone with dog at large, cause their dog's in their property with or without offense, um, cause it's on their property. So, um, the dog at large issue, um, in reference to the, uh, the dangerous dog, um, you know, we, we feel having definite overt action by a dog before we, as a municipal agency or government agency or Big Brother, or whatever you wanna call it, uh, to be classifying someone's dog in a manner that they can't have that dog in town anymore, that's why we think aggressive is a better terminology and a better reference for it. Um, and then, um, changing and providing people the avenue of getting their dog removed from that list, should the court deem their dog being aggressive. Um, in the new statute, the way we wrote it, um, the dog is only aggressive after a court rules it as such. Um, and, uh, we have to petition the court to have that done. It's not just if this happens, so your dog's dangerous. Um, so we, we feel it's more of a requirement on the state's part, which it should be, to prove that the dog is that way. And then we still need to have a remedy for the person to remove that dog from that list, because if, you know, if you love your dog, which most people that have dogs do, um, and you wanna keep it, um, you can't have it on that list, cause we still do not know of an insurance company that'll provide that insurance policy. And we just re-looked after we, we started revisiting this. Um, the other verbiage change was in ninety point oh six that Phyllis caught when she did her review, um, of this. And then, uh, in reference to, proving whether it's your dog or not, um, well, if you buy a license like you're required to by not only town code, but, um, county, state, every, every regulation out there, um, we'll know it's your dog, cause you'll buy a license, and we have a database, and we can just pull it up and say, oh, Joe Smith, this is your dog. So, um, that's an easy way for us to find out who the owner of the dog is, is by obeying the laws that are on the books currently and are gonna remain on the books as far as requiring licensing for your dog. And then if you do have it microchipped, obviously, that helps as well, so. Um, in reference to the, the fee thing, um, the town, actually, I think it's a state statute that requires a certain process to be handled to enact new fees and stuff, so there's only one new fee in reference to this ordinance that we've done, and that's the fee for the dog owner. If they refuse to bring the dog to us, and we have to send somebody to their house to bring a bite dog to our facility for quarantine, or the vet for quarantine. Um, and we, it's been published, and it's going through the legally required process for that, and eventually, council's gonna have to approve that, that, uh, change in fee, or the additional fee. Um, the other fees are listed on somewhere through the town website. I don't know if it's actually on the court part of it, or, um, but on the town website are the current list of fees. Um, they're also available at the court, um, because they're the ones, obviously, that initiate or hand out fines and fees. Um, and in reference to, um, home quarantine, if our animal control officer allows home quarantine to be conducted, there is no fee. We don't charge you to keep your dog. Um, otherwise, we'd make a lot of money, cause you have your dog every other day of the year, so, um, there's no fee for home quarantine. However, um, it has to be approved by the animal control officer to allow that to happen. And we do allow that to happen, um, as long as we can prove the dog has rabies vaccination, um, so it is a possibility, so. But there's no fee for home quarantine.
Thank you.
As far as the poisoning is concerned, I didn't, I was...
Which section is that under?
I, I don't know. I was rattling through here, trying to find it myself. To see exactly what that said.
Can you do a search?
But just for information out there, as far as the poisoning is concerned, there's this really cool stuff. It's a grain. They make it for gophers. That's what it's primarily for. That is a one-time poison. It's specially designed, once it's indested, it's ner- neutralized, and anything else that eats that animal cannot be poisoned from it. It's great stuff. I mean, I used to trap gophers, because I didn't wanna poison them, cause I didn't want a hawk eating them or something. But this stuff is one-time. They sell it at Waters, they sell it at Ace, and, uh, white bottle with a, a purple front on it with a gopher's head. And there's an injection tool. You inject it down into their holes, the whole nine yards. I use it daily.
So, the section, the only section that poison is listed in the new ordinance is, uh, ninety point one six, subsection B, which is a direct copy and paste from Arizona revised statute. So that is on the books right now, based on state legislature. Um, and it only, and it only covers, and it's talking about a defense to being charged with an animal cruelty charge. There's, it actually is a defense to being charged. It's not a, an offense. It's not a charge we can charge you with. Um, it allows a defense for po- poison being put out, um, um, to prevent you from being charged with animal cruelty. So it's not an, a chargeable offense. It's a defense to prevent you from being charged, is how it's listed in there. And it's a direct copy from state statute, so whether it's in here or not, um, it's, it's on, it's a law. Um, by adding the state statutes again, it allows our animal control officer to do enforcement of those at the lowest possible level, instead of charging people with state crimes. So, and that's why we wanted to bring those in there. So it says it's a defense to subsection A, which talks about, person commits cruelty to animals, if the person does any of the following. So if you do any of those followings, it's a defense, it's an affirmative defense, meaning we can't charge you if any person exposes poison to be taken by a dog that has killed or wounded livestock or poison. So you can poison a dog that's killing your livestock. And the statute says that is perfectly legal. And we wanna make sure the police know that, so they can't legally charge you with that crime. And so that's the only, the only mention of poison in Arizona revised statutes and in town code.
Annie, do you have any questions? Annie, have you fallen asleep?
Gotta unmute it.
I'm not sure if you are speaking to me or not, but I thought I heard you say my name.
Yep, I'm speaking to you.
Okay, I am following.
Do you have any comments or concerns?
I do not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the only one, other one that I had is I thought there was something in there that if you had a biting dog, is what I'm gonna call them, dangerous, whatever, however you wanna refer to it, but a dog that has bitten before, especially, that they would have to be contained in a pen off of the property line.
So, um, so that's under ninety point oh five, or oh six.
Keeping of aggressive dog.
Oh, seven. Fourteen, okay. Keeping of aggressive dog. So, you can't have an aggressive dog within the town limits without a certificate or registration issued under this section. Um, and then a proper enclosure for the aggressive dog, to confine the aggressive dog, and the posting of the premises with a clearly visible warning sign that there is an aggressive dog on the property. Um, the sign shall include warning symbol that informs children in the presence. You have to have a bond of... have to have a bond of a hundred thousand dollars, policy of liability insurance. Um, you can't let the dog be outside of the proper enclosure unless the dog is under control of the owner or responsible person, and is restrained by leash. Um, and then, can't we do that? Uh, any aggressive dog shall be immediately confiscated by animal control. Um, so, um... So it doesn't talk about what the proper enclosure is. However, it's not gonna matter. If your dog's deemed, deemed dangerous or aggressive, your dog ain't gonna be in Chino, because you cannot get those insurance policies. Still, and, and we kept those in there, because there was complaints that we were gonna remove them. We were gonna remove something, 'cause there's no point in having something that is impossible for someone to get. Um, but, um, so we can add the proper enclosure definition back in there? Isn't it? Oh, okay. Okay. Shall mean the secure confinement, either indoors or in a securely enclosed lock pen or structure within a secure side stop and floor design to prevent the dog from escaping and the entry of young children. The dog's head should not be able to protrude out of the enclosure. The enclosure shall protect the dog from the eas- elements and allow for the protection of fresh, provision of fresh food and water and exercise area. So it does define what the enclosure is. It doesn't say it has to be off the property line, however, but it has to prevent a child from getting inside and the dog from getting outside.
And it has to be small enough fencing the dog cannot get its head through it.
Correct. And a child cannot get inside of it. Um, so prevent the entry of a young child. Subsection F of, uh...
This side. Do you guys have any?
Ninety fourteen.
Yeah, ninety point one-four subsection F. So that one I, um...
Mike?
I'm good. No, I'm good with it, now that I've seen that.
One last, one last question from you ladies, if you have.
Well, some of these things that are deleted in one section were relocated, because Phyllis said, in the way laws are written, you have to have certain things in certain areas. So she relocated some of the definitions and things like that to the proper location inside the statute.
Don't leave, Vince.
So that is close to what the old one was. It just relocated.
One more chance. Debbie?
There's one thing.
Good, go ahead.
The dog that I have to prove is mine, if it rabies, uh, it had, says, a black mix, lab mix, and there's four black lab mix, mixes there, and the tag is off the dog, but I'm claiming my dog. How do I prove it's mine?
How do you prove it's yours currently?
My dog's mine. I'm not worried about it. I'm worried about...
Well, I mean, how does anybody prove it currently? I mean, that's not something we're changing. Well, it's in the current one. We're not changing that.
We're required to have dogs licensed in city limits. Also, if you're smart, you'll have your dog microchipped. So I don't know what other protection you can have. If your dog runs away and loses microchip, I don't know how you're gonna identify it. We can all, we, we can't do everything for everybody, but we can try to do most.
Okay. Okay. How do we solve that problem? How do you, how, you're bringing a problem here without a solution. But I didn't write the current ordinance, which is where it's in, but I think you guys were participation, had participation in that. I was not involved in the current ordinance the way it's written. So...
Well, I mean...
I mean, I don't know how to solve that problem, other than we've never come across that problem ever.
Well, you may someday.
The dog will listen to me.
Yeah.
If it's a stranger and it's not my dog, not very often, it's, it's gonna come when I call it, and I probably don't know it's really named, if it's not mine.
And we've never had the issue, and this ordinance has been in effect for a long time.
Chief, what do you got back there?
It's not a problem, because if somebody's gonna wanna claim a dog that's not licensed or microchipped, we're gonna charge them if the dog's large and bored, because they really wanna get the dog back. So we never have time for somebody coming in and trying to pick a dog that wasn't theirs. In fact, if there's four black and tan dogs, we'll get them all in the end.
Okay. Tom, did you have something?
Yeah, I saw about it. Uh, in that dangerous dog section, it says, "In addition, the owner shall conspicuously display a sign with a warning symbol that informs children of the presence of a dangerous dog." Can you describe that? I mean, am I supposed to put up a sign that's got a bloody kid's head hanging out of a dog's mouth?
I don't know. That's not, that's the old version. That is not the, the current version that we are proposing.
Okay. 'Cause if, if I just put up a sign that says dangerous dog, and a kid coming home from school that's been through eight grades and still can't read or write, he's not gonna know, sorry.
They may be forty years old and still can't...
So, we, we do not have that in the new subsection. They have to have a sign that tells a child that doesn't know how to read, or, and a grown-up that doesn't know how to read, that there's a dangerous dog in there. However, the enclosure is gonna be as such, that the, the child, adult, or anyone can't get inside the enclosure, and the dog can't get out to get it.
So my sign on the front fence that says, "My dog thinks Jehovah's Witness tastes like chicken," will do?
If they come on your property. I would recommend a sign that says, "No trespassing."
It does.
Okay. Anything else? One last time, ladies. Nothing?
Sold.
Sold. We will, we will bring this back next meeting. There will be no open discussion. Uh, if you are concerned as a group about any of the thing that was brought forth tonight from the ladies, and, uh, Tom, uh, Mrs. Lewis has the minutes, so you can re- find out what, whatever they wanted to look at, if you haven't already written it down, from Miss Lewis. Jack?
Yes, sir.
You're a timekeeper.
I make a motion we adjourn, please.
Second it.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I tried to.